Call this being county commissioner's order will start with the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all have a copy of the amendments proceeding meetings, is there any additions or corrections?
Mr. President, if there are no additions or corrections, I move that be accepted as presented.
Ben moving to second, the amendments proceeding needs to be accepted as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Department head reports, Mr. Haberman.
I'm saying you're getting my attention. Good morning.
Morning.
I thought I had that thing turned off. All I've got reported is we've been out, we're doing a can today, we've got six more to do that we know of, and it seems like with all the rain we've been getting, we've been finding more every day. And I'm just trying to move money around and do it, keep them to keep up on them. And when they get them located, we go out and do it, is all we can do. But we've got, we've been doing our mowing, I've had everything we could mow without mowing, so we can get the first round done, then new tractor can take up and just keep it up. And we've tuned in, it seems like the more rain we get, the faster it grows. And it's just been-
Wings are doing good this year.
Yeah, they are, but that and the trees.
Right.
We've been patching, I've got both patch machines out and a patch crew out, trying to get everything green and ready, and I think probably when the weather quits this rain, we'll start chip sealing. We've got a lot of spots, like I showed you a picture of spots that were broke up in the road, we're gonna go around and just hit them, hit and miss on them, and do some edge patching, what we got left, and we'll just chip seal some roads. And so that's all I've got.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
I talked to a guy the other day, that road out beside the highway department.
Yeah.
Is that 350?
Yeah.
Which side, you mean, is that south of it?
One by the trailer quarter.
Northside.
Northside, that's true, that's, I think it is 350.
Okay. Somebody asked me about it, you know, when it rains or floods real bad, is there a can, do you know about that?
Yeah, there's, there's two cans on there that belong to that trailer quarter, belong to Willie's, and getting him to do anything with them cans is like pouring to you, because they need to be replaced, their old boiler pipes is what they are.
Okay, because they said in the wintertime it freezes a sheet of ice down that road.
We're already patching the edge of the road right there where it comes up on the road.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim. IT director, Ben.
Morning.
Morning.
In front of you today, I have two resumes for part-time employees for your consideration. The gentleman that we intended to hire did not pan out, he sent me an email the day before he was supposed to start saying he would not be able to because of his full-time job obligations. So before you today, I have Michael King and Skylar Nichols for your approval to hire as two part-time employees.
Well, we sure do need the-
I was going to abstain. Frank, if you have something to say.
That's fine, that's fine.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, he does.
Okay.
Before, I have to abstain on Mr. King because he's my cousin, but I would have voted for him, so let's put it that way.
Well, Mr. President, I make a motion that we go with Ben Houston's recommendation on Michael King and Skylar Nichols as hiring as part-time employees for the IT department.
I'll second the motion. Is there any discussion on these people? We sure do need the help, maybe we can get caught up once we have, once we have two people, and luckily we've got some departments that can put some money in this to hire these people. All in favor say aye. Close, motion carried. Okay.
Thanks, Ben.
Is that all you've got, Ben?
I'll have some things when Jenna comes up to talk about the move of juvenile probation, but that's all I have for now.
Is this, with getting these people hard, is that gonna get our cameras on the outside here?
Yeah, that'll free me, once we have-
We need to get that-
Yeah, once we have them trained, that'll free me up to finish that project most definitely. That's number one on the list right now.
Okay, okay. County attorney?
Basically, remember the contract you guys signed with Admiral R. Solutions?
Yes.
Because of state legislation, there's been an addendum which is approved by me, but I think when Kathy comes to speak, she'll address that too.
Okay.
So you just, you just need to re-sign it, because they changed the dates of when something needed to be turned in, and it's a state requirement, so there's, you have to re-sign it. It's the same contract besides the minor addendum.
Passes you, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. We'll get the council representative here?
No, I won't see him.
Nobody here from the council? Mail, we have any?
No mail.
No mail, moving right along. Old business, new business, 9/11 personnel, Terry Bennett. Kathy?
Thank you for checking it out. I have here that addendum to the contract, and it said it's from the state, they send it to every county, the only thing that's affected is the dates they're moving, the assessment date from March 1st to January 1st, and making some other changes throughout the next couple of years. So there's no changes in money or any type of contract over. So I have it here, I don't know if you'd like to sign it now, or, because what I'll do, I'll have to get your signatures and send it to Admiral R. Solutions for their signatures, and they'll send it to the state, and then the state signs it and sends it back to the county. So I don't know if you just want to hold it-
We can sign it at the end if you want us to.
Would you like to?
Just leave it with Sharon here, we'll sign it with the bills and stuff.
Just need one, but I can make two.
Do you have a motion?
I suppose we should, Ben, we're changing what we agreed to-
Move to accept the changes and authorize you us to sign the changes that per state law. Second?
Ben moving second to approve the addendum, all in favor say aye. Aye. Close, motion carried.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else, Kathy?
Nothing.
No, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
ADA plan, Strand Associates.
My name's Steve Ruble with Strand Associates, and thank you for putting me on your agenda this morning. I just wanted to take the opportunity to update everyone on where we are on the ADA transition plan for the county. Bulk of our efforts up to this point have been placed in evaluating your programs and services, your public facilities, and your public rights away, so that included the seven structures, or the seven buildings county has that you invite the public into, and also your sidewalks that you have in some of the outline areas of the county, which really weren't very much. I want to thank Barton for helping us gather some of that information here at the end, and we've taken that and identified the barriers that we have for people with physical disabilities within Fayette County, and we've compiled those and put those into a draft report, which I forwarded to the commissioners for your review. That's kind of where we are right now, we have some minor details to work out to complete a draft of the plan. The next steps is to put that plan out to the public for their review and comment. After that, we'll review the public's commentary, address that in a final draft of the plan, and we'll be ready to put that plan before the commissioners for your consideration for adoption and approval.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Michelle Dudley, Community Corrections Board appointments.
What I gave you is the bylaws for the advisory board, which is state law as far as the membership on section five, and we had some vacancies on there that we need to get filled, the ones that are highlighted in the yellow highlighter, I need for the commissioners, it's under their jurisdiction to appoint those persons, there's four to the board, I need an ex-offender on the board, and I'd like to have Michael Jordan appointed to that position, and also you're responsible for appointing for laypersons. One has already been appointed, and I'd like to ask that Sharon Cranfield from the House of Ruth be appointed, Greg Halcom from the, he's just a resident, he's with the Biker's Church, he does a lot of work at Community Corrections as far as Bible study and church services and so forth, he helps a lot, he's transported some of our people that were unemployed out of town for job interviews and stuff, he puts, donates a lot of time to our facility, so he'd have the knowledge of what we need there, and also I'd like to have Mel Wadel appointed from the Bevjo Homeless Shelter, because we also, we're really closely with them, when we're getting people back on CTP, they have no place to go, we have places and people up there, so I'd like to ask that the commissioners appoint those four persons to the board for, their term limit would be for four years.
Mr. President, if there are no objections, I move to accept the members as presented by Ms. Dudley for inclusion in the Community Corrections advisory board. Second?
Ben moving second to accept the recommendation of Michelle Dudley for these appointments, all in favor say aye. Aye. Close, motion carried.
The second item is the last page there, is a letter that I received about a week and a half ago from the Indiana Department of Corrections announcing that our base amount on the grant was going to be increased by $8,464, and that will be a permanent increase, I believe it was meant to help offset House Bill 1006, so I'll have to-
Which is what?
The new sentencing laws and sentencing guidelines, so they did increase our base amount by 8,464, and that will be permanent, and I'll have to get the new budget after, they wanted you guys notified, approve the new budget with that additional funds.
Just, just for the education of the public, and you correct me if I'm wrong, that laws have changed, criminal laws have changed to where they're no longer called classes, they're called levels, and what used to be a class D felony such as dealing in marijuana is now a level five or six, that that person will not go to a prison, they will serve any jail time in the local jail, so I'm assuming that these monies are to kind of offset the additional population increase, major or minor, that some of these changes are bringing about, is that, is that correct?
For the most part, class D felonies, what now is considered a class D felon will be a level five or a level six, and those people will no longer be accepted by the Indiana Department of Correction, they'll have to be handled on a local level, which is either the jail or Community Corrections program.
Yeah, level six, all D felonies are now level six, and anyone who's earliest possible release date, which factors in good credit, is less than a year, either goes to county jail or Community Corrections, and they're gonna be compensated based on that. And that goes into effect July 1st.
And you're gonna have way more people on probation also.
Yes.
Yeah, there's also-
Suspended sentences, and we have now getting a-
They've changed the laws on who can be suspended, I mean, I think it's gonna be a big learning curve for all probation, the jail, Community Corrections.
I think the jail's gonna get the brunt of it, because to come to our program, they have to have a job for the work release program, and have to have the funds to pay for home detention and work release, so I think the jail and probation are gonna get, obviously probation's gonna get all of it, our department and the jail's gonna be splitting, but I think the jail's really gonna get hit.
I think you're right.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Next up, Kelly Zuidman, she'll talk to us about her county insurance.
Thank you all for your time this morning, it's my understanding you guys aren't prepared to, to make a decision on this this morning while you're awaiting a renewal quote from your current company, so I kind of wanted to talk about what we, what we found when we reviewed your current insurance and what we were able to come up with as our proposed solution for you guys. In looking through the coverage that the county currently had, there were a couple areas of pretty significant concern. One of them was the, the fact that your law enforcement liability coverage has a $100,000 deductible for each and every occurrence, so every time the sheriff's department or the jail has a suit brought against them, that's $100,000 out of the county's pocket every single claim. We've, we have a proposal on the table that dramatically lowers that, we have a couple options that go, one of our options goes as low as a $10,000 deductible, so when you look at even just one claim, that could save you guys, and just a single claim that could easily save you guys $90,000, but if you have multiple claims, I mean, the savings would be compounded. Another area of major concern for us was that your property insurance values were grossly undervalued by about 10 and a half million dollars, and you guys had a co-insurance-
Based on?
Based on actuarially-
Replacement costs?
Replacement cost values, yeah, from, what they do is they look at, the insurance companies have actuaries that review all the, the costs for construction and replacement of like materials and like construction in the area, and so they have, you know, they've got tons and tons of data to support these numbers, and what happens is, you guys had a 90% co-insurance provision on your property policy, which meant that if your numbers are off, like let's say a tornado comes through here and wipes out a building, and your numbers are more than 10% off, which judging by the valuations that we got from various sources, that were all about the same, you guys were, you know, maybe 50% underfunded, so you would have had, if something bad happened, you would have to pay a penalty, which would reduce the amount of reimbursement you would get to repair your property, so that was a significant problem.
I'll explain that, will you?
Yeah, sure, so like, for instance, if you had a building insured for a million dollars, but it was really worth 1.5 million to replace it, then that's more than 10% off, and then you would be forced to pay a penalty for underinsuring your property. So for instance, what we've done is removed that co-insurance penalty, there's no penalty, we've valued your property as it should be valued for replacement costs, which increases your property values by like 10 and a half million, and we've been able to still do that in, at a lower cost than what you're currently paying, so quite a bit, over 10 and a half million dollars worth of coverage increased at a price less than you're currently paying. And again, that would make a huge difference if you had a fire, if you had a tornado come through here, hail damage, any, any kind of thing like that, it's a, it's a significant, a significant weakness with your current program that we've been able to fix in our proposal.
So that is just up to the insurance kind of whether we're underinsured, or they say we're underinsured or not, right?
Yeah, I mean, you guys are, you guys are testing to the value, when the statement of values gets presented to you every year, and you guys sign off on it and accept the value, you're representing that this is the value that your building is worth, I mean, depending on how you have it insured, if you have it at replacement cost, which means if you, if that building burns down, you're gonna replace it, then you need to be representing the appropriate values, otherwise, I mean, otherwise you guys are putting yourself on the line for failing to maintain appropriate insurance.
But the other thing is, is the insurance company decides what the value is, right?
Oh, well, I mean, they'll tell you what they think the value is, and an insurance company will either, I mean, they'll either agree to insure to that value or not, because for instance, the values that you guys currently had, or I get what you're saying, is that you probably, these values came from whatever insurance company.
Yeah, we're trying, I was trying to figure out, I don't know, if Barton was asked the same question, we were underinsured.
Right.
Who made that decision?
Oh.
We're underinsured.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure, because I wasn't here, you know, I'm not your agent, but like, what, what we do as an, as an agency is that we sit down with the client, and we say, every year we, we run the values on our clients to make sure that, you know, inflation hasn't caught up with us or replacement costs.
You basically got to cost management, right?
What's that?
You basically get your information out of cost management.
Yeah, right, yeah. So, and they're generally accepted ones that insurance companies use, they vary slightly, but not by the amount that we're seeing here, you know, you might see a small variation. So, yeah, that helps, usually that's done in conjunction with your agent, who would advise you what the appropriate values would be, and then report that to the, to the insurance company. Does that answer your question? Okay. The, your general liability limits, we, are pretty common, but the way your program is currently structured is that you have primary limits of a million dollars per occurrence, and $3 million as a policy aggregate on your general liability, your law enforcement liability, all your liability policies. On top of that sits an umbrella policy of 5 million, so essentially then you can see that you would have a stack of like 6 million per occurrence with 8 million in an aggregate. Our plan kind of does that differently, because that umbrella then, if you had a really big automobile claim and it ate up that umbrella limit, then you're done if you also have a very big law enforcement claim. It's that single umbrella, 5 million dollar limit, that can, can cover a variety of things, but once it's used up, it's used up. The way our programs has structured this plan is increased, bumps up those limits to 5 million per occurrence and 10 million aggregate on each line, so you'll have 5 million for your auto, 5 million for your liability, general liability, 5 million for your, you know, errors and omissions liability, you've got different silos, so essentially, in addition to just the, the plain increase in overall limits, where you before would have an 8 million dollar policy aggregate, we're proposing 10, that's 2 million more, but, but what's the even greater value is that it's separate limits, it's not just one umbrella that can only be used once, does that make sense?
It does make sense.
Instead, instead of having layered protection under one umbrella, you've got side-by-side standalones, is that what makes what you're saying?
Yes, that's exactly right, yeah. So I think we've, we've structured it in a way that I think makes more sense, offers you guys a ton more protection, and again, we've been able to do it at a cost that's less than what you're currently paying.
A whole big plus list, I hope.
Yeah, it is, yeah, I'm not talking about $500 less, I'm talking about, you know, significant amount less. And then, you know, as an agency, our agency's been around over 20 years, and we, my partner and I, we specialize, and we have a bunch of other people on our team who specialize in municipality business, so we've got cities, towns, and counties all over the state, some of which have been clients for over 30 years, so you know, we-
Just giving away my age.
Yeah, I don't personally have any that have been over 30 years, but I'm working on-
So you guys have municipalities that you've been with for 30 years, and they've been comfortable with what you've given them?
Right, and so, you know, I know that in the past, you know, you guys might have gotten a quote from someone, and unlike the plan you're currently on, you got it brand new last year, and already this year, they're not, they're not renewing coverage with you. We don't do that, we, we value our reputation in the marketplace, we've come in with a number that, that is fair for the, you know, for the exposure, and then we work with you to, to fix things, because what we don't do is come in and give you a quote and walk away and come back next year and give you a quote and say, well, I'm sorry it went up. We say, look, we know you have some claims, and that's why your pricing is what it is right now, but what our proposal also includes is loss control support to help you prevent and mitigate future losses, and like I said, we, we specialize in municipalities, so we know how to help a sheriff's department, you know, work on policies and procedures to help limit their exposure, we know how to help you guys put in employment practices that might help you avoid an EEOC claim, and our goal is to be your partner in risk management and help you be able to say, this is how we got where we are, where our, we're underinsured and we're paying too much, and say, here's how, here's our plan to fix this going forward, and we're gonna take control and stop the losses from happening, instead of just saying every year, what's, well, what's the renewal this year, can it be cheaper? You, you'll know you're gonna get a lower cost, because you'll be actively working with us as your partner to, to get to that point, because these numbers, insurance companies don't pull them out of the air, you know, they're looking at what your history is in your loss history, and they're saying, here's your loss history, we need to make money, because you know the insurance companies are not doing it for free, and, and that's your, that's your cost, so the best way for you guys to be able to lower your cost is to, to be able to work on, on preventing losses.
Well, in, in the event that you help a county bring down their losses, in the event, you'll make more money, and it makes a long dream for a future, you know, partnership.
Long-term relationship.
Right, for a long-term relationship, and not just that over here, well, you had more claims than you did last year, we're just gonna dump you, or, you know, vice versa.
Right.
And it, it's better for you to help us, you know.
Right, I mean, that's, and that's why, you know, the references we bring to the table will be other cities and towns that we, we have helped, and we also work with the hospital over here, and we help them save a lot of money, and the next year we can jack up the price, we just continue to look for ways to provide savings. You know, just two weeks ago, I delivered a renewal to, you know, cities, towns, municipality type things, it was a school system, and we delivered a 20% decrease, because we had worked with them successfully over three years, and they got their claims, they were having about $300,000 of claims, of claims per year before we came in there, and we helped them put in some controls and some policies, procedures, and reporting mechanisms within their organization, and they're now having between, their lowest year was $4,200 in claims, up to like $44,000, so we've been able to get that down from steadily $300,000 to under 50 consistently.
In three years.
In three years, and, and delivered the premium reduction that goes along with it. And, and, and that's what, it's, it's not about charging more to make more money, it's about helping people doing the right thing, solving problems, so that you have long-term, a long-term relationship with the customer.
Okay.
So, you know, if you guys have any questions about our, about us or what we do, we'd be happy to answer them now, otherwise we look forward to being able to present you the full proposal so you can, you know.
Will that be on, her partner, will that request for pricing and everything be on the agenda for Wednesday?
The, what, you know, what I am proposing to do is have a special meeting next, next Wednesday for us to go ahead and buy the insurance, we, as I explained to Kelly, out in the hallway, for recommend, our book person who has, now has our coverage, his mother's having heart surgery, and it's gonna be the first of the week before he can give us his pricing, realistically, this is one of the most, money-wise, one of the most important things the commissioners do. Last year, our insurance increased from 110 to 251,000, and we plain can't afford that, those increases. I'd like to, I would like to have the pricing from both people- I'd like to, I would like to have the pricing from both people for us to sit down and look at, know what we are buying. I, the commissioners are not going to, um, share that back and forth with the two people who have given us prices. I don't think that's fair. You give us your best price and then the commissioners figure what, what is the best deal for them. And the intention is to buy the insurance at our special meeting next Wednesday. Because this insurance is up the first of the month and we have, we have to do something. That, that seems like the fair way to do it to me. If you have any better suggestions, it's-
What time is that meeting?
Well, we haven't, we haven't said it. Yeah, I was, I was, I had it in my head probably 10 o'clock in the morning. And then Kelly said she was going to give us the proposal for us to sit down, look at that. We have to get his to sit down and look at it. I'm not smart enough for you to give me, uh, to give me a quote today and say, that looks good to me and, and, and go ahead and do it. I think the commissioners should sit down with their, uh, returning representatives and see what is being offered and what's the best for the, what's the best for the county.
We, uh, this is a good thing. Kelly and I both want a trip, uh, to Vienna and so we will have someone from the insurance company and someone from our office at that meeting. We apologize for that, but we worked, uh, real, hard for a whole year.
Art, if you want to take the commissioners along with you, we can decide.
There'll be about 50 people that have won this trip, but that's, that's the United States.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
You don't want to miss that.
You don't want to miss that.
No, no.
I would anticipate at that meeting, we'll know what we want to do and just go ahead and-
And the good part is we'll have somebody from the company.
No, and, and, but there will be somebody. When are you leaving?
Uh, Saturday.
Saturday.
Yeah. There will be somebody we can get ahold of in the meantime if we do have any questions or any explanations, right?
Enough on the work, even in Vienna.
Well?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can call us anytime.
Okay, okay. So if you want to present that to us for us to, um, set and look over, to our leisure, we'll get, get the other man's price in the first week and Wednesday to buy the insurance. That sound good to you?
Yeah, yep. That sounds good. Thank you. And again, if you guys have any questions in the meantime, you know, just call me any time.
And we very well might have once, once we look at it and see, see what we're getting.
Well, have a safe trip.
Thanks.
Enjoy yourselves.
Thank you.
Are you getting a copy of the proposal?
No. The reason being-
So you're going to leave that with us today?
No. Brad, they have to do it simultaneously.
I've got, I've got, yeah, I've got three copies. This is, um, and then this is just the highlight sheet, uh, kind of going into the main things that I told you.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Juvenile probation. No detentions today.
Juvenile department.
I, I'm requesting, um, permission or discussion today of possibly moving just the juvenile department, um, to far south on the first floor of the annex building. It's where the old health department used to be. And the, that would be two juvenile officers and a clerical person. The reason that I'm asking for that, uh, my main reason is a safety concern for the two juvenile officers now. Currently, they're on the second floor, no windows, one entrance and exit, which is the stairway. I'm concerned about, you know, a fire hazard, um, if they have clients in their office that, um, start acting out, it's difficult to get to them. Um, it's always been an issue and I've, I've looked past couple of years of trying to change offices around so that wouldn't be an issue. And the layout of that building and the number of personnel that I have, it's really impossible to get them on the first floor. Um, and then there would be no use for those offices on the second floor. Um, it's set up now with the way it is, there would be no structural changes needed. There are two offices. I have talked to Bill. Uh, it would be booting him out of his office, but we've talked about it and he's willing to move into, um, the day, where the day reporting used to be. Um, other reasons for that, I've had the juvenile officers ask me several times, their clerical's on the first floor. It would be much more efficient, uh, time-wise and for them to be able to communicate with their clerical if they were all together and all on, on one floor. We have enough equipment, uh, there would be no extra purchase. We would basically just be moving the equipment that they absolutely need. Uh, the other thing that I like about it is that currently we have adult offenders and, um, juveniles that are waiting for appointments all way in that same hallway, uh, right outside the probation apartment. Uh, if we move to the far side, then we would have a separate waiting room for, uh, juvenile cases from the adult cases. Um, the needs that we would have in order to get that done, like I said, the offices are already laid out there. The main thing would be, and Ben can talk about this a little more, uh, data. There would have to be six.
Uh, yeah, actually, I counted yesterday, we would need, uh, five new data drops, uh, for the computers and phones in that area. Uh, we, we could, we have to pull, Bill has a secure line going to, uh, the jail network. We'd have to pull that out of the wall and take that down to day reporting, which isn't a big deal, I can handle that. Um, but we would need, uh, five new data drops from those offices to the switch that is down underneath the old part of the building right now. Uh, that's where everything terminates down there. Uh, that area is not set up to terminate right there currently. So, um, it, the, the standing quote that I have from Metronet to run lines is $80 per drop, so it would be $400 to accomplish that. If we went through Metronet, we could obviously try to, uh, get other quotes for that to see if we could get a better price from, from someone else, but that's the quote that I have standing with them.
Right, well.
And, and we discussed this as far as what the cost would be for that. I did look and I believe that it would, that it's possible to file a claim. Um, probation department does have a line item budget that's been pre-approved, um, or that's been appropriated from the council for technology upgrade. And I haven't had a chance to talk with Debbie, but I think that would qualify.
Sounds like it.
Uh, in order to do that. I, usually I use it for new computers. Um, we're not, we haven't used any of that line item this year and I think we're pretty good on our computers. Uh, it's $5,000 in that line item. So we have more than enough to cover it as long as Debbie is saying that it can be used for that purpose. I'm assuming it can. So we can cover that cost. The only other thing, um, I, I was just wanting to get approval if we could do that. We have leftover paint. We did paint the whole, uh, old side, it was looking pretty battered and, uh, we do have leftover paint. I think we probably would paint those offices. There's also a security camera, um, because probation department has, um, their own security separate from what Ben's doing at the courthouse. Um, years ago, Lawrence, I, I don't know if he got a grant or it was paid out in probation, but there was a company that came in. We had a security camera in day reporting because we had day reporting there. We would like to unhook that and possibly see if we can move that up to, if we get approved, where the juvenile waiting room would be. And then my computers actually can, um, be connected to that so we have somebody that's able to observe on that other side for extra security measures, um, just to make sure everything's okay on that side. Um, I can't think of anything else. I, I didn't know if there would be, I didn't have a chance to contact everyone on this. Um, I didn't know if there would be any questions or concerns and if not, I'm asking for approval to be able to go ahead and get started. Uh, there's going to be some laywork we need to do first, it's not going to be right away, but it should be fairly soon.
I don't see a problem. I mean, that goes right along with wanting to move, maybe go over there in that part of the building. As far as the quotes, you know, we do have a, uh, we have been asked to get three quotes on everything just to keep everybody honest we could, so if you could.
Sure.
If you could find other people to give quotes.
That's okay.
Uh, I, I think it's good move myself, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
Mr. President, I'll move to, uh, if it's necessary to allow, um, juvenile probation to move to the south end and to, uh, seek quotes for whatever drops that are necessary and also to move the security camera according to whatever specifications Mr., uh, Ben thinks is appropriate.
Second.
Ben moved in second. We approve the request to move, uh, over to the south end. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And actually, I have a, a separate question since you said the three quotes. I, I had, um, appropriated monies to buy, purchase a new vehicle for the probation apartment. Uh, my intent is that we have the Explorer that has over, I think we're at 100,000 miles. Um, we have the Aerostar van and the Crown Vic, um, that are basically not being used. Uh, I wanted to trade them and I do want to keep the Explorer. My intention being, there are many times that we need both vehicles where either we, this H-E11006 that was talked about earlier, uh, they updated our standards with probation of supervision and it's going to require that we do a certain amount of home visits based on the risk assessment of the probationer. So for example, if they're considered high risk to reoffend, we're required once, at least I think it's every 60 days to do a home visit. Then we're doing a lot more training in addition to that, which oftentimes is out of, um, out of town. In addition, the juvenile officers, uh, DCS is requiring any kids that are in out-of-home placement have to be visited at the placement facility every month. And we don't have any close, uh, Warren Lake's the closest placement. We have kids in Fort Wayne, Terre Haute, Lebanon. Um, the last time they had to do that, we basically, they got, uh, hotel overnight so they could stay in that area in order to see all the kids at once. So we're going to have a need for a new vehicle. Uh, if I'm looking at, uh, purchasing a new vehicle, I'm looking for a, um, fuel economy type vehicle that's going to be really good on fuel. I would like to use that vehicle for the out-of-town stuff. Keep the Explorer that's older, has 100,000 miles on it for our in-town home visits and things like that to try to, um, lengthen the time that that vehicle's going to be in good use, that we're going to be able to use it. And we should be good to go for a while as far as that goes. My question is, should I be getting three quotes as far as what vehicle we need to purchase?
I, Mr. President, Mr. President, I think it might not be a bad idea, but she'll talk to the sheriff and see if with the state quote, the state bids, if they have that type of vehicle available.
I already talked to Billy and I've talked to Redmond's and the council, I'd asked for 30, but they only approved 17,500. So I'm not quite sure. And I did mine based on the state quotes. I got on the website and looked, um, what was quoted on there, we're not going to qualify for. Uh, but we will get a government rate. I just don't know, it depends on what vehicle.
What do you mean, we don't qualify for?
We are going to get a lower rate than, you know, what they have advertised on their lot. It's just going to be a matter of trying to find something that's going to be worth 17,500. So I did talk to Billy about how to do all that. I've only contacted Redmond's at this point, I haven't, uh, Michelle's told me, I think, of some other places that could possibly, we could look at, I just haven't gone any further.
Barnett asked the question, what do you mean we don't qualify?
For the state bids.
I'm just saying that I looked up those costs on state bids and it'll tell you what the amount is, uh, the contracted amount.
You're saying-
And they're all about 17,500. So the things that, the things that the sheriff would get on their Durangos and, and their vehicles now are more. Uh, even at the state bid, we're not going to be able to reach that. However, I'm not really looking for, um, necessarily same needs as the sheriff. You know, I don't care about the speed and the, it's, I'm looking at the fuel economy more than anything because it's going to be more of a car that we drive to training and, and place.
Well, it costs nothing to get quotes. I would suggest you figure out what you want and get the quotes and then-
And then I can present them to you guys.
-what we can do.
If you had gotten the $30,000, would you have qualified?
Yeah, for more vehicles.
Right. So basically by getting such a low amount, you're not going to qualify for the better deals.
Right. It, for the typical car, for the typical vehicles that law enforcement agencies are going to get. I mean, it-
Right.
Redmond's, uh, was a Dodge Charger and, um, an Avenger. And I, I don't even know, I don't even think there's any way we're going to be able to cover that, but I don't need that type of car either. I can get a lower fuel economy, but they only quoted like F-150s, Durangos and Impalas, I, whatever the typical law enforcement-
As I say, you know, if, why don't you, it costs nothing to get quotes, why don't you get quotes on what you think you need and then we'll-
Okay.
Decide what we can do or not after you get those.
Okay.
Okay?
It's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
County road 450 and 400 north, I think I brought this up the last, um, the last meeting. I've had calls from residents out there, this crossroad seems to be a very, um, dangerous crossroad, isn't it? You come up over the hill and, uh, you're right there, right there at the crossroad, but that's, uh, they have had several bad wrecks there. They've, uh, they have requested that we put a four-way stop out there. Have, Jay, have you looked at that and?
Yeah, I looked at it. I'm not, I'm not sure if, if it'll slow them down, but I'm not sure they'll stop for it. Because like a lot of places in the county, if they, if they know it's wide open, they're not going to stop at the stop sign.
Well, but-
I don't know how, I, I mean, it gives them-
But if, if we put it there, then, then we have done our part to tell them that they should stop, right?
And if there's an accident at that four-way and there was a stop sign, they're going to get nailed for running the stop sign.
Yeah.
I mean, right now, it's just an open four-lane.
But your biggest problem out there is the hill. When you go down the hill going north, there's a mound of dirt on that one side and it blocks the view.
Right.
It blocks the view, that's the biggest problem out there.
Well, then do we need a, a sign before they get to that to tell them that there's going to be a, a stop sign up there?
Yeah, we, we always put a stop ahead sign up before we get to them.
Well, if we did, then-
But it's the people crossing going east to west that have the biggest problem out there because they're trying to cross and they can't see down over that hill.
I would suggest we make a resolution to designate the, as a four-way, four-way south.
Second.
Ben moved in second to be, um, make a resolution. County road 450 east and 400 north, be a four-way stop. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay, it'll take a couple of weeks to get signs up, CS, get them located before you can drive any posts down to there.
That's fine.
Did I see Bill Gray come back in? Bill, do you, do you want to speak to the elevator?
Yes, I gave you a quote on that. Um, get this elevator up and running at the annex building. Uh, the first quote was 7,000, I might, I give you my paper, I don't remember what it was.
Uh, 1711195 and the, and the second bid was 101624.
The second bid was to replace everything that needed to be done, take the elevator completely remodeled except for the car and control.
Well, we've been, from my point, we've been through so much grief with this elevator, it looks to me like we need to spend the money to make sure it is fixed once and for all.
Well, the difference in that quote, if we fix just the stuff to get it going now, down the road, we're going to have to change that pump and that tank. And then while he's got it completely apart, he may as well do it now because if he's not, he'll have to take it apart later. So it's just fix it now or fix it later.
You know, it's, the, the elevator does not get used much, but with the ADA, uh, requirements, we, we have to have it running. So he might suggest that we, we approve, uh, the bid to fix everything it needs on it, get it done for once. And I, I assume that with doing that, they will guarantee the thing will operate for more than two, three months, right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Like I said, other than controls and controls are something that's just, they're electronic. That could go out anytime. I mean, that could go out here.
Right.
So other than that, yeah.
I wouldn't think that would be like you vomit.
No, that's not.
Right.
Excuse me, it's just contact, the stuff, yeah. I mean, they're not old ones, but they're not brand new.
Right.
Mr. President, I would move to accept the quote from Vertical Systems Elevator for $10,162.40 to fix it and fix it right.
Second.
Ben moved to second to approve the $10,162.40 quote to repair the elevator. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
You'll give me a signed copy of it, so I can get it to them.
Sure.
Yes. Is Marley going to want us to sign this?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The only other item I have on the agenda is the special meeting we discussed. As I said, our insurance policy runs out the last day of this month. We have one quote for insurance and one coming next week. So I'd like to have a special meeting next Wednesday to go ahead and finalize purchasing liability cash insurance for the county.
I will move for a special meeting to be advertised for next Wednesday at 10:00 for the purpose of considering insurance. And did you want to do a purpose?
Yes.
And also for the purpose of consideration of changing 911.
Second.
Ben moved to second. We have a special meeting starting at 10:00 next Wednesday for the purpose of purchasing insurance and considering what we're going to do with non-lev. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Chris, we was talking about how many, that executive meeting, we don't need, we don't need a motion. We can just do that on our own, is that right?
It's published.
Is there any patron concerns?
I was late. I was late.
Okay. Terry?
I wasn't here when you guys was on here. Stuff over there. On the resolution of us going through you guys for new hires, I know you guys wanted packets of them. However, I did not have access to a copy machine over the weekend that was bulk enough to make this many packets. So I submitted the names to you guys. If you guys approve it today, I can get them hired. They've been given their two weeks' notice. I can get them going around June 30th, July 1st, start putting them through the training program, and then they'll be ready to kind of be second person around August 25th. Everybody's been background checked, everything.
Do you need a motion, then?
Yes.
Has she got the packets with her?
Yes, she's.
What is it?
Do you have the packets with you?
Yeah. Well, not, and they're mine, the packets. I didn't make the copies.
Okay.
These are them.
Well, why don't, why don't the commissioners take a short recess to look at these? That was, that was the purpose of the request, so we can look at the applications and see who we were hiring and what their background had been. So we'll take 15 or 20 minutes recess here, and then reconvene the meeting.
Yes, sir.
If they have, reconvene that meeting. And entertain a motion to either accept or reject the applicants for 911.
I move to accept the applicant presented by Ms. Bennett for 911 employment.
Second.
It's been moved to second to approve the list of applicants presented by Terry for 911. For any more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Again, is there any, is there any?
Thank you, Terry.
More patrons' concerns? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the claims of the payroll.
So moved.
Then moved to second to approve the claims of the payroll as they have been presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. By being moved to agenda, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. Been moved to second to adjourn in this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Mayings rejected.